Calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM on March 1st, 2018. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda for tonight's meeting? If not, they will be adopted as presented. Ask -- oh, I didn't take roll call yet. Help me in a -- oh, roll call. We also had a little seminar. During the seminar, they talked about allowing people to get involved in the discussion, and they talked about a round robin where you would not be able to speak again until you -- everyone else had decided whether they wanted to speak or not speak. But we'll let the glorious chair, who's illustrious chair, who's not here tonight, handle that on the 15th. She will introduce the round robin. So tonight, I want to do -- looking at Mark, I think is the way to do it. We'll call it the domino effect, where you stand the dominos and then there's a tip over. So, Mark, during the discussions, you certainly can lead from that side, and other people can fall in line or whatever.
I won't stand up or anything.
No, you don't have to stand up. So I want to take rolls, starting on my right.
Mark Baughman.
Jane Garrison.
Eric Brooks.
Larry Crandall.
Rocheneau Farrell.
Rituja Endapuri.
Now, are there any -- again, I'll ask, are there any changes or additions to the agenda for tonight? If not, they'll adopt it. Are there any additions or changes to the February 1st, 2018 meeting as distributed? If not, we approve the minutes of that meeting. And I will state that I did take time after I got back on to this northern portion of the continent, looked at the meeting, and it seemed to go well. And you came close to ending on time. And I want to thank the Planning Commission members for the confidence in selecting me to serve for another term as vice chair. The honor is greatly appreciated. With that, we're now moving to the public comment. And I did want to state, I don't know who signed up besides Mr. Eastman tonight, but I wanted to mention that we really appreciate the Mary Wicker, Paul Stickney, and your sticking to the subject, being very positive and helpful. I'm speaking for myself and I think most of the Planning Commission. So thank you for your presentations. And, Mr. Eastman, you're first.
James Eastman, Fagan Property, along 196th Avenue Northeast, north end of Sammamish. Want to talk tonight in regards to this housing strategy. Right now, really what's left to be built on is Sammamish. A lot of it is constrained by critical areas, and there's very little good, good land left. And between that and the housing market being what it is, and the supply and the demand curve, everything we see being built is basically a really small lot going straight up. And I would like to, in our code, consider some new technologies that may be better our housing character in regards to this, and also the stormwater problem. If there's anywhere in the world or in the U.S. that has a problem with stormwater, it's Sammamish. We build all this impervious surface up on the plateau, and we have to hold it and slowly get it down to the lake. But with housing prices, you know, selling for $400 a square foot, I mean, there's technologies out there. You know, septic's been around for 120 years. Well has been around for 120 years. You know, how come we have 6,000 septic systems in Sammamish? All that is is a big vault. You know, how come we don't have 6,000 stormwater vaults buried in people's yards or under their driveway with a lid? It's just because nobody's ever done it. We don't do it. You know, we have these giant ponds. So I'd like to see in our code where maybe we insinuate, or even say, if you put a vault in your yard with a restrictor on it for your stormwater, then, you know, there's some sort of benefit. You would think about all the places in the world that would institute new technology. I mean, we bag on like LID technology and some of the other stuff, but if there's ever a time and a place, it's probably Sammamish. So I'd like to see, maybe us consider that in the housing code. Another thing is, you know, a well, all you're doing is getting water out of the ground, and yet a lot of places have tanks that you put it in, do it, and it pressurizes the house. So if you think about a septic system in a well, how come you couldn't have your stormwater vault that I just referenced, and then with new houses being built, and plumb that to the toilets? So, and then inject, you know, a blue dye. I mean, that technology's out there. There's a Texas gray water code in Texas. When it rains, it pours all at once, and a lot of farmers and ranchers catch all the rain. So, you know, there's whole books and stuff on this, but I don't think there's any cities that, other than, you know, large apartment complexes where they've instituted this. And I think if there's a place that can do it, it's here in Sammamish. And not as mandatory, but maybe we could go ahead and sanitize it because, you know, the technology's there. It's been around 125 years. Just nobody does it. But with housing, selling at $400 a square foot, there's definitely that option to work it into how we build our housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. And it's always good to give the city a positive challenge. Thank you. Next, we have Mary Wicker. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Wicker, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. For non-agenda tonight, I wanted to talk about the last two city council retreats I attended in full, the one in Tacoma in 2017 and the one up here at the Plateau Club in 2018. 2017, they did a lot of governance principles, but they did talk a lot about public comment, what to do with it, how to get it, how to use it, restrictions on it, partly because there were a lot of people coming for big topics. This year, I spoke to public comment twice. I want you to know it's very hard to come to all these meetings. It's very hard to do preparation work. When I talk in front of you, there's a lot of research that goes into the back. I go door to door. I read things on the Internet. I call people on the phone. I talk with other people in other cities about some of the problems that we have. So I'm not just speaking for myself. And with sign code last year, and actually the year before, I started in 2016, I had taken a lot of photos of how people were using signs. And I presented some of those materials to the Planning Commission, and I had said, hey, do you guys like this? Are you interested in this? Because it's a lot of time and effort, but I'm willing to do it. And the answer was yes, and you guys sort of like it, and you thought it was funny. So I'm still doing that, and I've been trying to come to the Planning Commission because I believe if you give your input earlier, that you might get heard and you might get listened to, because it's stuff that really impacts all of us. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about art, because art is not a sign. Art doesn't necessarily have letters. In downtown Seattle, outside of the biochemical engineering building, they have art specifically built out of letters from all the different languages. There's a love sign, which is a symbol, but also used as a bench. So you can't say art is one thing or another, and I don't think you can take art and write code for it and say art has to be this size, or it has to be made out of this media, or it has to be located in these places. And granted, art is something in the eye of the beholder. Some people like certain art forms, some people don't. But I think not having it in our city is a problem. And I got into this because, as you know, I usually speak on stormwater, and I thought, hey, with all this stuff happening in Wally Prey's property, with the creeks in Zacuse Creek and Ebright Creek and Salmon, it'd be really cool if some of the utility boxes around, those are the -- they look like, they're either painted, or they look like stainless steel cabinets, if they could have like artwork put on them, because they do that in Renton, they do that in Issaquah, they do that in my hometown in Bozeman, Montana, all over the place. They're coated, because they're for public benefit and they're in the right of way. And what they're called is they're called art wraps. You can either paint them, but paint usually wears off. It's kind of like this wrap that sticks on, and it's anti-graffiti, and you can put photos on it, you can put drawings on it, you can put information on it, and they're just really great. So I had gone originally in October of 2016 to the Arts Commission with these ideas for what to put on them, particularly down by Zacuse, where we're doing the basin study and everything. And I found out they had money for them, they were going to do them, but they're not allowed by the city code. In fact, the only art that is allowed is this one piece here outside here, which is nice and wonderful. But the other place the art has been put is in roundabouts. So when it's in a roundabout, it's actually a traffic diversion thing. So I'm here tonight, and I will speak during the agenda item to try to get art exempted so we can have it in the city. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else who wants to do a non-agenda item? Hearing none, we'll move on. And hopefully, we're on the housing strategy, and I believe this will be some, just a little bit more -- we're not here to make a decision, we're here to listen. So we're ready.
Thank you, Vice Chair Crandall. My name is Doug McIntyre. I'm Senior Planner with the Department of Community Development. To my right, getting set up at the moment, is Mike Stinger, a planner with Arch, Regional Coalition for Housing. And to his right is Arthur Sullivan, the Program Manager for Arch. So tonight, we'll be talking, kind of continuing the conversations that we've had in the past. This is our fourth work session on housing, and we're starting to build some momentum. I was actually unexpectedly out at the last meeting. I was in the office and then called out at a moment's notice. So I apologize. I've done my best to catch up. I've been back for about a week and a half, so I had quite a bit of catching up to do. But with that being said, I think we have a good presentation for you tonight. Of course, if there are any questions, we can certainly discuss further, but we have some slides prepared. We'd like to do our best to step through the progression, and then we can open it up for more broad question and answer. So if you could please, thank you. Wrong word. Wrong word. There you go. Our topics tonight are, to provide a little bit of a recap, we're, we promised some updates and clarifications from the conversation on February 1st. So as promised, we will close those, close up those loose ends, and then we'll proceed into talking about the real substantive part of this meeting, which is the key housing gaps that we're starting to identify based on the data that we've seen and the conversations we've had. We're going to then progress into a preliminary conversation on housing strategies. I know we kind of teased the commission where we start talking a little bit about it, and then we pull back, and then we kind of go forward a little bit. This will be that preliminary step to really starting to talk about that. And I think that'll be good for the commission. This will really lead into work session number five on April 5th, which, as a side note, is a joint meeting with the Human Services Commission, as you may already know. We are starting to involve that commission as well. We'll end with a brief discussion on next steps, and then open it up, as I mentioned, for a question and answer. So again, tonight, the purpose is informational, you're learning, no need to provide direction beyond what you feel is appropriate. We're not taking any specific action tonight. So at this point in the process, the commission has discussed more broadly what the housing element is, what housing policy in Sammamish is, and how this all relates, that big upside-down triangle we talk about a lot, the framework that we build as planners, and how that then affects the housing supply in the city. We've also talked specifically about what is a housing strategy plan, and then what is it not. I think that's always important, is clearly defining what those boundaries are. We've had a couple different discussions on what the city can do in terms of affecting housing, and the role that we play, and who else is involved. We've, again, talked about types of strategies that we can use. For just another way to think about it is, what are the tools in the toolbox? And then in our, I believe it was our second work session, we talked about our outreach effort and communication efforts related to this effort. You may have noticed that you had a couple printed handouts at the dais. One of those items is a draft of the survey we're going to use. So that's going to be our first outreach effort in this process, more directly as opposed to what we do in these open public meetings. That is planned to go live on March 19th and last until April 9th, and that's going to be done through our virtual town hall. So I wanted to give it to the commission ahead of time so that you can take a look, let me know if you have any thoughts ahead of the commencement of that survey. So just, if you do, we can, you can send me an email, call me, we can talk after the meeting, et cetera. That'll really lead to the more, more in-depth public engagement. And then, of course, at the last meeting, you discussed some pretty detailed demographic and housing data, and I think that that was a really good conversation from what I've heard. And as I mentioned, this, these slides will answer some of the questions that were left open at the end of that meeting. And then that graphic at the bottom, I think, is really important, that the kind of rational model, right? We're learning first, we're taking the disparate parts of this, we're then moving to the conceptualization phase, and then at the end of it is the proposal. So try to think of it that way. We're still, we're still kind of somewhere between that first and that second part of it, the education and the conceptualization. So to answer Commissioner Crandall's comment earlier about, we're here to, we're here to listen, I think that that's a good way to phrase it for tonight. So with that being said, here are the closing up of the loose ends from the third work session. I'm going to turn it over real quick to Mike Stinger on my right, and I don't think he's going to provide a huge amount of background on this, because I think the numbers mostly answer the question. But if you feel like you want to talk further, please let us know.
I didn't have anything specific to say about the data, but to give you an opportunity to acknowledge whether, you know, this answered your questions about, as we understood it, you wanted to see the difference between kind of the before and after of the annexation of Kohani. And in order to do that, we needed to back up to the 2015 American Community Survey, where before it was annexed, you could see Kohani and the characteristics separately from the rest of the city. And so if you have any questions about that, or if you wanted to point out any, anything you noticed in the data, you know, now's a good time to do that.
Mark?
Just a quick clarification is that you'll notice it says Kohani CDP. CDP means Census Designated Place. So that is not the case anymore because it's part of the city. So this is all data that's in your Exhibit 1 as well.
So questions? We'll start with Mark or there?
I guess the only one question, just as a clarification, which I think is obvious, but even though Kohani's kind of indented there, it's really that they're both separate line items still, and that we would add them together to create the current picture of what Sammamish is, correct?
That is correct.
And I mean, I guess it seems to me that apparently Kohani has a little more housing diversity than old Sammamish, and so I think that'll be important to take a look at what the overall picture is by combining them. That's all I was thinking.
Thank you. Jane?
I have no questions.
I just had one. Again, I really appreciate the data on Kohani, because as you look at it, it makes a nice fit. It looks like it was intended to be part of Sammamish. The percentages are very, very close. And I would, Mark brought up a good point. I want to be careful in saying this. Kohani was a planned development, and it turned out pretty well. So I think the city of Sammamish taking on planning as a goal is very important. I don't think it hurts the outcome if we do some real fine planning. Okay.
And to tag on to that comment, I think it's also important to realize that the annexation went into effect at the beginning of 2016. So this is really our first chance to talk about housing strategies with Kohani as part of the city. So that's an important note.
Ms. Farrell?
No.
I do?
I just have a question. So when I was looking at the numbers, it's sort of, the Kohani numbers are trending along with what the Sammamish averages are. But there are certain numbers, like Mark pointed, you know, the multifamily homes. That percentage is at least 10 percentage points more than, you know, what is average Sammamish. So how much, what difference does that make? Does that make a huge difference in the overall? Like, how is that calculated when you add it cumulatively?
So while Mike looks through his notes, more generally, I think that, yes, that does make a difference. 10% is not insignificant. It's still what we would probably consider a little bit less than, say, countywide averages, but it is more diverse in the housing types than many other parts of Sammamish.
I'm not finding it.
Okay. That's okay. We can, yeah, we can address it at the end, too. So you'll notice that this is a table for the breakdown of housing types. We also, Arch was able to provide data on a breakdown of household sizes, which is important when we talk about housing. We also had a breakdown of housing types, and then, of course, homeownership, so tenure, the percent owner occupied versus renter occupied. And then, Mike, do you want to take this table? Again, as another way to close a loose end, tie up a loose end, there was information provided on persons with disabilities, and specifically as related to school district.
Well, I had a nice conversation with one of the managers with Lake Washington School District. I actually found this table in the Human Services Report, the draft report that was made to council a couple weeks ago. And so when I sat down with this woman from the school district, I had this along with me, and she said, yep, that's the data. And she particularly pointed out the groupings, excuse me, intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities, and autism. And she said the reason that she highlighted those was that those are the ones that are going to be the most difficult. This woman, by the way, happens to be the principal of the Transition Academy, which is for the 19 to 21-year-olds. And so they're, if I state it awkwardly, probably is, their mission is to try and help people with various disabilities transition into independent living. But those three categories she mentioned would be the ones that, you know, might be the most difficult to find suitable living places as they get into adulthood. Autism has grown, that's the biggest number of the three, obviously. And she said, all of them are growing, but that one in particular is growing the most rapidly for various reasons. But the other two are also, you know, significant, not so much because of the number, but because their difficulties. So I don't know. It's not a clear, it doesn't lead to a clear direction, but I was hoping that that would help answer your curiosity about how many students have disabilities that might be related to housing needs.
I don't think we, I didn't get a copy of this in the packet. I'm not sure if anybody else did. This is very helpful. I like this chart. I wonder if it's possible to get a copy of that.
We can certainly provide.
Yeah, great, thank you. That's really great information. I've never seen the numbers on autism before, so that's really nice to kind of know. So they're saying here that in the Isqwa School District with autism, in total, between the ages of 3 and 21, there are 264 students. And then on Lake Washington, there's 562. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And we can follow up with that. I can ask our commission clerk, Kevin Johnson, to send a copy to the commission.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else want to make a question on this one? Starting, looking towards Mark. Jane?
I don't understand Rocheneau's numbers. What I'm looking at is for autism is 113 in the Isqwa School District.
Oh, between 3 and 21, it's a blue column.
I see. So then I'm seeing the total over here. All right. Does this represent the number of people, this total number at the bottom, or could one person have several disabilities?
There is the category for multiple disabilities, about halfway, roughly down, just below.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that one does capture multiple disabilities.
So this would represent the number of students almost who are disabled? This 1,661?
Correct. Total in the Isqwa School District, between the ages of 3 and 21.
Okay.
And the division between those two school districts are roughly, so half the city's in one and halves in the other, just so I'm clear, right?
That's correct. It's actually an interesting arrangement. So the city of Sammamish is served by three school districts, the other, the third one being the Snoqualmie Valley School District, but it's a very small portion, eastern portion of the city. The large majority of the city is covered by either Issaquah, which the boundary runs, I believe it's Eighth, right here. So north of Eighth is Lake Washington, south is Issaquah.
And then, I don't know what the group thinks. It would be helpful for me sometimes to have a paper copy of these slides as we go through, and we can jot down notes, because sometimes it's hard to think about which slide something was on or whatever. It'd be awesome.
And now it's my turn, and I just want to add one clarification, because grandchildren attend Liberty High School, lived in Newcastle, went to Newcastle Elementary, Paula, et cetera. Does this represent only the city of Sammamish or the entire school district? Mike?
The entire school district.
How difficult would it be to find? Did that director have, possibly have that data?
She indicated that she did.
Okay.
I think the numbers are going to get pretty small at that point, but I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Can I just point out that if you read the note at the bottom, fewer than 10 is suppressed for privacy reasons. So it's possible that if we do Sammamish only, a lot of this will just kind of fade away, because the numbers will be, some of the categories will be fewer than 10.
Potentially, that's correct.
Anyone else? So go ahead and continue.
I just have a quick comment. Sorry. There's a small typo in the last column. It says 32121.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That would be a very large age range.
Yeah. And I was wondering, does, because it has age 21, I'm actually not familiar with Eastside Catholic, if those numbers would, you know, impact the overall count of students? And then also CWI, or CWU, Central Washington University, if that would impact? And then, I know Sammamish has a large number of like smaller Montessori schools or private schools. Do those numbers even make a difference?
It's a good question. I'm not sure the data is readily available. These are public school districts. The private schools may track that. We're not sure. It might be harder to obtain as well, because each one, you would have to approach each private institution. So that one might be difficult to obtain. The public school data is sufficiently easier to obtain. I can move on if that's, okay. So the other question that was brought up was the age of structures in the city. And this is hard to read on the slide, so we provided it as a hard copy on the dais, so you can reference that there. The bottom line here is that the darker colors are newer homes, and the lighter colors are older homes. So I was a little bit surprised by this map in the sense that newer housing is more dispersed throughout the city than I had maybe anticipated. But it does show a good range, and I think that that's important, that we're not, you know, it's, development's happening all throughout the city, and it's not just isolated to certain parts of the city. And I think that's the main takeaway that, at least I have from this map. You may have other takeaways. This is based on King County Assessor data, and it's This is based on King County Assessor data, and it's current up until last month, so very recent data. So moving on, I understand there were questions about if we can get data broken down by census block groups. So again, another situation where the map is a little hard to read on the slide, so it's provided as hard copy. The bottom line here is that the census block group is the most fine-grained breakout of census data that you can have. So the hierarchy is the block, and then it goes to a block group, and then it goes to a tract. So you get more and more properties as you go higher up. So we use block groups frequently, and this slide relates to the next couple of slides about commuter data, which I understand was an interest in the commission at the last meeting to have more data provided on that. So I will refer back to this map on the next couple of slides, and I'll illuminate a couple interesting things about it. So one of the, I guess, the common or question came up at the last meeting about commuting and commuters out of the city. So we can obtain information from the American Community Survey, which is a five-year, I believe they call it a decennial survey, and it's accurate to a 94% confidence rate. And it's basically the in-between, the 10-year census, and it provides us with updated information. So we use the five-year estimate here. The bottom, the X-axis is the cardinal or ordinal arrangement of the census block groups that are shown on the map prior. So the one thing that I take away from this data is that people are commuting from all throughout the city. It's a relatively flat line, with the exception of the block group number two, which is interesting because it's actually mostly Issaquah Highlands. There's like a very tiny, tiny portion of it in the city, but it captures, we can't break it down further than that, so it captures in this snapshot. So that's why you see a little bit of a skew in the block group number two. And just wanted to, again, point that out. But my, at least my takeaway is the volume of commuters is not necessarily isolated. It's pretty spread out throughout the city. And again, you can translate this back to the map to see in more detail where those commuters are coming from. That then leads us into.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Did you say Issaquah Highlands?
Yes. So if you look at the map, census block group number two is southeastern, south-central portion of the city captures the small notch there, and then it actually captures a good portion of Issaquah Highlands as well. It's the pink hatched area on the bottom.
So then 20 would also be Issaquah Highlands?
No, actually, the number 20 is wholly within Sumamish. The one that covers the other part of the Issaquah Highlands is actually not in any of the Sumamish boundary, so it's excluded entirely from the data.
Okay.
The other block group that this happens to is block group number four, and block group number 22, and number 27, and a portion of 17. So those ones are going to have data that's for households outside of the city. However, in those areas, there are far less people living in those areas. The one where it really skews it is census block group number two. So again, these are just kind of interesting little tidbits based on a quick analysis of the city based on block group. So when you talk about commuter data, you also then want to talk about, well, how are people commuting? And in this case, we pulled out the number of car commuters, and you'll notice that this breakdown is actually relatively similar to the breakdown you see in the earlier slide, which tells me that the vast majority of commuters are car commuters, which makes sense. We are a bedroom community that is, it lines up with the data. And then, to further break that down, we wanted to talk about, okay, well then, what is that number? Out of those commuting methods, the modes, we see 90% of people in the total analysis used a car, 9% use public transportation, and 1% walked, which I am very kind of shocked by. I want to know where these people live and where they work, so not too sure about that, but that's the data. And then, of course, when you take the 90% of people that drive by car or commute by car, then the breakdown of, okay, that 90%, what is the breakdown of that group? 85% of them drive alone, and 15% carpool. So again, this is data that's not only useful for housing strategies, but it's also useful for things that we're working on, like our Transportation Master Program, or Master Plan, sorry, and other efforts the city does. There are no questions about that. I will continue on, because the other important part is, okay, we have all these commuters, how long does it take them? And this is an interesting one, because what I take away from this is that there are a lot of people probably commuting to Bellevue or Redmond that really, the tallest, the highest number there, 30 to 34 minutes, I know because I do that in the opposite direction, and it's about 30 to 34 minutes to those two cities. So that's my guess. The 0 to 10 minutes, 10 to 14 minutes, maybe that's Issaquah or within the city. I would say 0 to 10 minutes is probably a service worker, maybe working at Met Market, commuting from, I don't know, Pine Lake. That would be a 0 to 10 minute commute. As you get into 10 to 14, maybe we're talking about Costco, maybe we're talking about Simons, one of those institutions. When you start to get into 60 minutes, then you're probably talking about Seattle. So these are kind of the takeaways we have from this data.
So I have an observation about, so a couple of things. I commute to Seattle, and it depends on when you go. And I have the ability to leave, like, at 10 o'clock, and I can get there in 30 minutes, 35 minutes. And so I think the time of day that the commuting is going on has a huge impact on this, which might kind of muddy the waters a little bit, unfortunately. But I think it's still interesting stuff. And I think this would be neat for the public to know, because then they might understand why the traffic's so bad, it's because they've got all these people driving their cars by themselves. Right, that's.
Right. We actually frequently talk about traffic as not a system problem, it's not a road-network problem necessarily, it's a timing problem. And everybody's on the road at the exact same time. If you go, everybody knows, 228th between 7:45 and 8:15, somewhere in that range, you're going to be sitting there for a while. But every, that's the point, is that that's a choice people are making, or maybe not a choice necessarily, but there's reasons why everyone's there at the same time. It's not necessarily that the network is deficient, and it might be in certain areas, but overall, it's, everybody's on the road at the same time doing the same thing, so. Okay, so there was one final loose end to tie up, and there was a good conversation about growth targets. And I love talking about growth targets, and I think it's a really important conversation to have, and it does relate to housing, obviously. A little side note there is that we have a residential growth target. We also have an employment growth target, and I think that gets lost because it is almost never talked about. But that's really related to commercial space in the city. So I'll back up. At the most basic, high-level view of a growth target, it's a capacity measure more than anything else. It's a zone capacity measure. It's not a debit account of, we get this many units, we zero it out, and then growth stops. That's not what it is. It's simply a capacity measure. We work with King County on the allocated targets to demonstrate that we have that zone capacity, and we have proven, importantly, we have proven that we have the capacity, and so therefore, we have met that obligation under the Growth Management Act and as well the King County countywide planning policies. We have met our obligation to show that we have the capacity. So the important, the other important thing to know about growth targets is that it doesn't tell you how much is built, it doesn't tell you where it's built, it doesn't tell you when it's built, it doesn't tell you what is built. It just tells you that you have the zone capacity to cover this many dwelling units through this period of time. It's a 20-year mark. It goes from, in our case, from the 2015 Comp Plan Update to 2035. So I just wanted to make sure I addressed that. It is a regional process. It generates from the state and the state law, and it works, it really does start with the Office of Financial Management providing counties with population projections. And then it works its way through the county process, and then they convert, at the county level, they convert the number of people into households using the data that they have. And then they get the number of households in the county, and then they break it out between the cities. And those are done by the hierarchy that you're assigned as a city. And that's part of a broader multi-county process called Vision 2050, where they basically delineate the hierarchy of cities. So for instance, Seattle is considered a metropolitan city, and therefore gets a much higher growth rate than a city like Duval. So that's kind of my little brief, you know, opinion rooted in experience on the growth target. So I just want to make sure we did talk about that to close that loop. Are there any questions?
We'll still start with my right, please, Mark. Go ahead. Jane?
I have nothing.
Erica has something.
So on the zoned land capacity, that just simply says that we have enough acres currently zoned under these different zonings, but it does, and I know that, I think that we're now actually understanding a little more fine-grained about those actual acres of land and how much of them they could actually be built out, right? Which we'll kind of backfeed into this. I also had, as you were talking about the number of people and the zone, and the capacity and all that, it made me think, okay, well, that could be tied right into traffic, again, knowing that everyone is single occupancy, you know, that would actually do some projections on where our traffic is likely to go in the future, once we're built out with that capacity, maybe.
Absolutely.
Furthermore, it might help, using the age thing, kind of understand where that traffic is coming from and where it's going, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and we absolutely do use land use assumptions in traffic modeling. So that's a requirement that we use for what we call our Traffic Concurrence Review, which is one of the first steps any project comes through. They have to demonstrate what they're, how they meet the assumptions built into the traffic model, and based on what they're proposing, how that release of trips generated. So it's, what you're hitting on is that this is a growth, it's easy to distill it down into a growth target, but it's actually a very complex part of how we grow. It's not just housing, it's everything. And it's environmentally critical areas, it's traffic, it's residential units. So it's relatively complex. So I've taken up quite a bit of time in just closing up the loose ends. I do want to move into the, kind of keeping the momentum going, so I'm going to move into a conversation about housing gaps, and I'm going to turn it over to Arthur and Mike to talk a little bit in more detail about what do we mean when we talk about housing gaps.
Good evening. So I'm going to help start this conversation tonight. I'm not sure how far we'll get with it tonight, because you have other agenda items and stuff, but we wanted to, I'm sort of bringing you back to the housing strategy again. And this is an attempt, or could be a tool, to help you frame what you see conditions are in the city from a kind of common sense, practical point of view that is informed by the data that you've been receiving over the last few meetings. And there's a couple of different ways that you might look at it, but the idea is to start saying, hmm, based on what we think needs are, can we identify some areas of need that we think our community probably has? And those needs can be expressed in terms of both types of households as well as types of housing that you think could address some of those types of households and stuff. And so, and the reason, so that's a very common, next slide. And so where this can help you is you have, we're going to provide, you have a former housing strategy plan that you're going to build from, we're going to propose adding some more things for you to consider, and it's going to be a really big, long list. And really, going back to the purpose of that housing strategy is trying to figure out what strategies should be focused on by the community in this housing strategy work. And so it's another tool to sort of maybe help you bridge the conversation from all of that data to having something that, you know, more succinctly helps you think about different strategies and going, hmm, this strategy might help address certain needs. So it's meant to be a tool to help you as we start going through the strategy. So it's kind of a document or a process to help bridge gaps and get you more comfortable and prepared to deal with strategies. So that in general is what we mean by housing gaps. It is not an explicit requirement. We have found that a lot of cities have found, commissions and other groups such as yourselves have found, a conversation along these lines helps them, you know, sort of doing a pause to sort of reflect upon the data. I think you've made some comments in the past few meetings and stuff, but this would allow you to sort of revisit some of that. And then if, potentially, create a product that you can refer to in the future. Now, what, in our mind, and I think what we're showing here is, if you look at the next slide, next slide. This is the table that we created way back in September, where you listed the different types of households that are in a community. And then we then, and that's sort of your up and down part of the chart, and then across the columns are different income levels. And so the idea could be that the exercise we've done with some other cities is they, is from your input and also from evaluating the data, is to start identifying those areas of particular need that you think you have in your community. And as on the right, left-hand side, it says is, you could start populating this table with arrows. Those where you think there is a need that needs to be addressed with an up arrow, those that you're addressing well with the other direction arrow. And in doing that, you could populate it either by putting the arrows just by the household type without consideration of income, you could do it just by doing the column headings by an income level, or you could put it within the grid saying, we care about, like, single parents who are earning under the $45,000 a year. You could get more precise. And sometimes the way we've done that is actually have this up on the wall, and you take some dots and you start populating that. And we could sort of talk with you about, if you like this tool, how might you get to that point of populating this and trying to figure out, you know, to create that document? And there's, so there are a couple of different ways we could populate it. We could talk about it tonight, start talking about it some. We could bring it back with a chart and allow you to populate it. And then we could also, as staff, look at the data a little bit harder in between the two meetings, and we could start populating, and you could react to by either agreeing with or say, why didn't you do that, or why didn't you do this? So the questions I think we have for you tonight first is, does this feel like an exercise that would help you get ready to start evaluating, would this be a helpful tool for you? So that's sort of the first question.
Answers? Questions? Jane?
I think it does. I think it helps us zero in on it, because right now, it's kind of a bunch of pieces all out there, and this pulls it all together, so I like it.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, for sure. I'm curious about the income levels that we have here and how they're related to the, what is it, 30% of?
And I think we'd be happy to sort of give you some sense of that a little more, using those kind of terms in the chart, update the chart to reflect that a little bit better.
Right.
It's never a perfect science in drawing those, because you have different household sizes, and each household size has a different range. But as I was explaining this, I was going, okay, how do I, I wanted to be able to make that note for you, and I couldn't do it off the top of my head, but we can add that to the chart.
I also, and maybe in doing that, there might be some more resolution above 100K, because I think that there's a lot of variation that starts about there going up. You might need some, you know, 125, 150, something like that.
We'll try to make sure we have it up to, like, 120% of median, whatever that translates to, and I think that will probably be around, that should be around 120 or so thousand. So we'll take it at least to there.
Thank you.
I'm going to just take a couple of minutes. First, these charts, I think, are excellent. And what I've seen tonight is something I haven't been able to focus on as well as I am tonight. So hopefully, we're going to get the backup for the maps. Now, here is, on this chart particularly, I was able to take the survey on, the branding survey. One of the things that I noted there was they asked about, do you work in Sumamish or don't you work? I would prefer the word employed, and when you're looking at a survey, have you ever been employed on the branding one? Because it could be a stay-at-home mom who's never worked. So when I look at this, it just was so great to see this information, and one of the things came to my mind was income of 100,000, multi-generational households, what if they have three people working? what if they have three people working in that household, and they're earning 33-something thousand, which adds up to 100,000, but they are not living in a very large home? And then there can be the vice versa, single person living with that income in a large home. So we're looking at this diversity, and I think this chart is really going to take us a long ways.
I do have a quick comment. This is based on the exercise done in September at the kickoff meeting. So the commission did put these together, so it's helpful to know that it's broken out this way because of the conversation we had in September. Just a little side note.
I really like this. I think this will be very helpful. Yeah, great.
I would like a combination of what you suggested, Mr. Sullivan, is that we do as a commission this exercise, but I would like to have the chart that you would probably put for recommendation, just, I don't want to see it, but maybe after we're done with our exercise, we can compare the two charts.
Is that your, I'll go back to the rest of the group. So we, so what I, the suggestion that was just made is that for staff to go do the exercise where we would, using data, say what we think gap areas are, but not put that in the packet explicitly. And when we do that, what we've also typically done is if we, if we say something is a need area, we will note, what is the data that told us that? And it may be more than just one piece of data, okay? So if there are things that we think are gap areas, we will put in our notes why we think that is the case.
So I have a question about it. You suggested that we maybe put it on the wall and, you know, put red and green or something. I guess I'm curious, it seems to me that we should be making these plans based on facts.
Yes.
And not really our opinions. So what is the value in us, you know, doing something with it?
Well, what I would.
Because our perceptions might be right, or they certainly might be wrong.
We've given you a lot of data to read, so do your homework before you vote.
But see, that's a concerning comment to me, because we should be doing this based on that data.
Right.
And I don't know how us filling out a survey, you're testing our learning perhaps, but I'm not sure how that's getting at the facts of the matter, which is, I might believe that we're underserving, I picked something, senior households, but that doesn't mean that that's a fact. I could have misinterpreted the data, I didn't do my reading, whatever. Seems to me that this should be based on facts, to the extent that we have them.
Right. So that, I think the question I'm sort of hearing here is, we can propose something and have you see it, and then you can challenge it with your voting or whatever, but, or you do it and then we'll compare it to what us, because everyone has their own filters when they're using a data. I think it's one of the first things we said. We would, you know, some people might hone in on certain data. So if you, if, whenever you're doing either reacting to what we provide, or you start, and then we compare it to a student, you know, to the staff approach, I think everybody should be taking the perspective, just like we would be documenting why we think it's relevant, you'd have to make the case to the rest of your commission as to why you feel it's relevant. So when, so I'd leave that to you, how you want to handle creating the chart that we use. Now, we also may want to have a second half of this chart. Sometimes people want to start getting into types of housing. So we might have, in other words, you might all of a sudden say, hey, we see gap areas for, for both, that, let's see, what's the example? The example I usually use accessory dwelling units, because it's easy to use, is that can help small households with lower incomes, but it can also help seniors who want to stay in their homes. In other words, it could be a form of housing that might identify a variety of the gap areas. So the, so some areas, some cities or the commissions who are working on these, first they'll do this, but they'll jump right into also types of housing that particularly interest them because of that chart. And that's sort of a, it's a one, two kind of combination that they put together, and they call that then the housing gaps that they've used. And if you'd like, we can share, it's just a one, one and a half page document that Kirkland just put together, it's the most recent group, we can share that with you so you could see what that looks like. And you'll see that they have a list, and then under each one, there's three or four bullets as to why. So for the people, it was sort of the data, and then for the housing types, it's sort of listed because it serves these needs that we identified.
I was looking down the line, and it looks like mostly the commission is nodding. We would appreciate that.
Okay.
Page and a half.
Great. Okay.
As you were talking, I did, just curious about, if we identify the income levels that we want us, that need to be served, would the housing types kind of be determined by the market, right? You're kind of hitting these price points. Do the housing types just follow that, or do you really need to look at the housing types specifically too, in your, in your experience?
I think that from, it's an evolutionary process in, in working on housing strategies, is that as you start working on it, and you start thinking about incomes, you start thinking about needs, you start realizing certain forms of housing might more naturally address certain needs. It doesn't mean that's the sole. And then they, and then a city starts going, but we don't have any of that. Hmm, so maybe that's, and so they start saying, we have to think about certain types of housing too, because they're not naturally occurring, but it feels like they could occur, and therefore, that's why they start calling them out. It doesn't mean that's the only answers to meeting certain needs, but that's where sometimes it evolves to. Okay? So I guess the question, so it sounds like that's a green light, that you'd like staff to start populating a table and chart, and, and then also provide you the example of what the Kirkland Group, their final sort of gaps document looks like. And then we should try to have some type of exercise for you at the next meeting to react to that, to make changes, or challenge, or add on to what we as staff prepare. Is that?
Right, and then we're free to do our own chart to, for conversation, right?
Right. In fact, that would be a good exercise for you to think about, start looking through the data and knowing it's going to look something very close to this, to start doing that on your own. So that would be that part. And I'd like to jump now to strategies, just for a couple of minutes tonight.
But just a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, those last two items, you said a limited amount, and that's kind of confuses me, when you say limited amount. Why did you say that?
That is a good question. I was, I was thinking about that as well when I, when I was looking at the slide. And that was the kind of qualitative piece of information the planning commission gave us when we were doing the exercise, and the point there being that there was some conversation about, certain commissioners felt like they didn't see a whole lot of very young families in their neighborhoods, and wanted to make sure that we noted that. And so it wasn't just putting it as kind of that additional household type, as a quote-unquote "very young family," but the fact that was important to planning commission was that they, the commissioners didn't feel like there was a whole lot of that type of household.
Thank you. It looks like you're trying to limit.
Oh, no, no, no. Okay. Thank you for, thank you for pointing that out then, because that is not the intent of that. Thank you.
Okay, ready to move on to the, a little bit on the housing strategy? Again, because of the time tonight, what we wanted to do is start also getting you ready to start thinking about housing strategy. So on this slide, we just summarized examples of strategies the city has done in the last 10 or so years. To give you an idea of looking back, oh, here are things the city did. Some of these were probably identified as within strategies in the last plan. And so, but the examples are, obviously, the largest is the town center. Not only did that, that had effects, impacts in a several variety of ways in the community. One, by diversifying and creating more ranges of types of housing, especially on higher-density forms of housing that were limited in the city, so it increased the availability of more forms of housing. Second, there was a system put in place to have affordability explicitly linked to the result of the increased overall capacity in the town center. And we have seen a number of projects in, since the plan was adopted, that are being built and have those units within them. Not only, and you had a very unique approach to the affordability program. You had both a mandatory component, and you had a voluntary component. And what's been interesting is that builders, the voluntary was, you could get even above your base density if a portion of that amount in excess of the base density also was affordable above and beyond what was mandated within the base. And interestingly, almost all of that voluntary affordability has been bought essentially, or accounted for. Not necessarily all, but much of it has already been accounted for in the developments that are under construction or in process at this time. So that, that, you know, often you, that's one of your best signs, that you design a system that the market can use. The fact that your voluntary element is being actively used, I think, is a good indication of that. You also created some TDR incentives within the town center, so you're both trying to also preserve some open spaces in the community in exchange for higher densities within the town center. So that was probably one of the most, largest areas in the, around housing strategies that you've worked on. You also did do make a piece of surplus public land available for affordable housing for the Habitat project, just located down the street from here, which is under construction at this time. You updated your accessory dwelling unit ordinance requirements, and made those a little more, hopefully, a little more user-friendly. So you did that. You adopted impact fee waivers, so developments that have affordable housing have their impact fees significantly reduced in exchange for that. And that's something you've, you've done both, you sort of did that at two levels. You and other cities in East King County lobbied the state to give you more discretion on that tool. So you all worked together, and the legislation was changed, and then you then updated your actual waiver provisions. You have provisions to allow group residences, and then you have done some regional work, both in terms of coordinating with county planning policies. But you've also, what isn't up on here, is you've been funding affordable housing through a joint program with all the other cities in East King County, the Arch Trust Fund process, and you've been funding a wide range of housing, the Habitat project, but other develop, and other cities help support the Habitat project, but you've also funded projects in other cities. And when you do that, you get some credit for assisting those developments towards meeting affordable housing objectives for the city. So those are examples of things that you have done. In your packet on pages 11 through 16, exhibit two, we took all of the housing strategies that are in your current plan. We didn't show what priority they were at this point, it's just a complete listing. What we want to do with you in the relative near future is, the first step is giving you a chance to ask just questions about these strategies so that you understand them, and what they might be and, and stuff. We're not trying to say you love them or hate them, it's more, the first step is, let's go through these lists of strategies, and you ask clarification questions, okay? What you have in your packet is just the language from, we sent you a plan at the very beginning of this process that had other columns in addition about who it serves and stuff. So this, there's no new language here. What we'd like, and so what we want to do, hopefully start the next meeting as well, is to start going through the strategies, and you see they're grouped by the major category areas we've talked about in the past, and mostly just get you talking about them, asking questions, and starting to make sure you're starting to understand what they are. So we'd like to do that, but we'd like to also do something else as well at that same time, which is, that list is a list that was developed 10, 12, 12 years ago. Since then, we've been working with a lot of cities on housing strategies in East King County. We've been, as part of that, we've been researching other regions' housing strategies. We've been looking at toolkits of strategies from all kinds of different players, private developer groups, nonprofit groups, and stuff like that. And we have some additional strategies that we think should be on the list that you look at. And remembering, the purpose of the strategy list is to give you a full range of ideas to then choose from as to ones that you think are going to be most appropriate to address the highest priority needs. It doesn't mean you won't ever get, you know, announce it for the next like, three years or so. It doesn't, you know, and that's what we're trying to shortlist, is what are the priorities? It's not to say certain strategies are bad, it's just what are the ones that are most important to look at? And then the idea is, in five years, you go back and you look at your results, just like we showed you these results, and say, look at needs again, and revisit the list and, and update the list. So we'd like to come back to you when we're doing the clarification discussion, and if you're open to it, we'd like to add in these other ideas that we've seen from all that research. And the way we would present it to you is in red line from what you have in front of you, or what's in your packet tonight, so that you can see which things are carryovers and which ones are added on. And we would put them in the same subsections, so that they're still following the same basic format. So that's, so that's a quick overview on strategies, and if you have questions about that, or give us direction on if you like the staff proposal for the next step with those.
Mark, go ahead.
So one question I have, which may be more of a question for our staff. You know, you guys have a first frontline view of what's worked and what hasn't. I mean, you can look at the evidence and see kind of overall whether the plan has worked or not, if certain things have been accomplished and certain things haven't. But I think it'd be interesting to hear from firsthand knowledge, we tried this, we didn't ever do anything with that, this worked really well.
Okay.
This, I think, contributed to that. Not a dissertation on each one, but just kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down, or we never tried it.
Right. And to do that, what we have to do is, we need to let you know which from that list were the high priority strategies, because those are the ones that we've been looking most actively at. And when I say "we" is because most of these, we were in front of the commission helping with that as well. So, but we can do that. But we won't have responses to many of them, because they were lower, they were ranked as lower priority, and, but we'll clarify that as well.
Sure, but wouldn't that be a, we didn't, because it was a lower priority, we didn't implement or did attempt to implement.
Right, right. And so part of your exercise is, hey, well, let's elevate that one. That one should go high now. But that's, we'll add that background for you.
Jane?
I hate to open up a can of worms. I'm not sure it's pertinent, after going to the Robert's Rules of Order class, I think I'll pass.
Okay. Thank you. There is a, we do have a little time limit tonight. So Eric, go ahead.
These are just some comments, I think, well, I know they're comments, but I don't know how relevant they are. They are, so performance standards, one of our public comments were about kind of hinting towards performance standards for housing. Does that type of thing belong in this, in this exercise we're doing?
Yeah. I think what you're getting at is a different take on our zoning code in terms of being less of a prescriptive, upfront prescriptive code and more of a performance-based code, is that?
Well, it just, maybe it's more of a building code component, it's not so much the housing is maybe what, where that would be handled best, perhaps?
Potentially, and maybe we can talk offline a little bit more about it, but to the extent that code amendments are discussed as a strategy, that's certainly something we can talk about. Code amendments or code provisions that we could add that would impact housing, I think, I think that is certainly something we can talk about.
Right. And then some other things is raising the voluntary quantity of affordable housing. If we're, if we're having good luck, people taking those voluntary quantities, I think just ratchet those up and see how far they, you know, I mean, if that's an opportunity, that would be a code change, right?
Be a code change, correct.
And then I, the impact fee reduction thing might be something else we'd want to look at, because I think we're all recognizing that the impacts are actually more, and we're trying to catch, so when you start reducing those impact fees, it's kind of taking money away from what we really need to address throughout the city. So.
Yeah, and that's, that's an interesting.
And what I want to add is, you're two meetings out conversation. What we're trying to do right now is, we want to make sure you understand what the different strategies are. And if you're like, wait, I want to add one to, I want to add a couple to the list too, that I didn't see, that will be from this list we give you. And so our first step is to get you as much on the same page as to understanding, then you get into the debate about which one should be prioritized and stuff. Okay? So we're not looking for that judgment call at this point yet.
And thank you. What I was, I again want to. What I was, I again want to heartfully thank the consultants and staff for involving us, and I'm trying to be quick on this, in this potential dialogue with give and take. And so I really appreciate, I'll do some things offline. As Jane said, I won't open any can of worms right now, or, or put any back in a can. What I was getting at is, I'm, I'm just glowing here. We don't meet until April 5th, but in the meantime, and that's with the Human Services, but I think Mr. McIntyre failed to point out that the Human Services is going to receive a presentation on the housing strategy. And I wondered, can, is there a way they could be involved in our little exercise? So I don't need an answer now, just something to think about, but remember, you have a lot of workload. Okay. So with that, are we ready to move on to signage, or do you want to wrap up there?
Yeah, so if there's no other questions on the strategies, so I did want to just, as always, we've been building this slide for quite a while now, showing where we've been and how we got to now. Next meeting, as co-chair Crandall pointed out, is April 5th as a joint meeting, so be prepared for the joint meeting. I think that'll be really good to discuss housing with the Human Services Commission. I will say, the Planning Commission is still the, the commission is going to be talking about all the strategies, everything. We're going to be talking about the strategies with the Human Services Commission that relate more specifically to special needs housing and affordable housing. So we're trying to narrow their focus so that we can get some really good input on those particular items, so that we can continue to move the train, get the train going on our path to adoption. And then one final note I did want to make is that we've, now that we've added the Human Services Commission, we want to be more deliberate about how we involve them. So we actually think we're going to probably slow down the process a tiny bit. One of the early schedules had shown it in summer, summer of 2018, we were going to be recommending something to city council. I think, I think that, given the facts that we have now, that's probably not the current schedule. So we're going to work internally on a new schedule and get that posted on the website as well as in front, get it in front of the commission. So just as a kind of side note on that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. I appreciate the comments as always, and we have a lot of work to do to get us to April 5th, and I think that'll be a good, a good conversation.
I had a request for a five-minute break, so we're going to take a five-minute break while people erect their signage. And we'll be fresh and, and willing to go on a whole new topic, so, commission, be back in four and a half minutes. I'm seeing a quorum, so the meeting is back in order, and we have some staff members who are going to talk to us on the new business sign regulation. Do I need to wait for Kevin, or?
Oh, no, we got it, okay. Good evening, commission members. David Goodman with the Department of Community Development. I think you know Doug over here. We are here this evening to provide you with a little bit of background information about the sign code regulation amendments that we plan to bring to you on March 15th and April 19th. So this evening, we're, we're going information only. We're not presenting any proposed amendments or proposed new text for the sign code to you. What we're going to do instead is provide a little bit of background about what is the sign code, what's in it, what does it do? And then we're going to talk a little bit about the major update that we completed last year, which includes an overview of the Supreme Court case that started it all, Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona. We'll go over what the sign code looked like before we adopted our amendments last year, and then show you how they changed and why they changed. Then finally, at the end, we're going to give you a little preview about the types of issues that we're going to be bringing to you in two weeks from tonight. Again, not going into too many specifics, but just kind of a general overview, so you have a good idea of what's coming up. So I'm going to pass it over to Doug here, who's going to walk you through a little bit of what is in our sign code.
Thank you, David. So in order to talk about the code cleanup that we're going to be proposing in two weeks, we need to sufficiently set the foundation for our planning commission to talk about signs and how the city regulates signs. It's done throughout the country as part of the police powers of local government to protect the health, safety, and welfare of communities. Signs are also important for businesses and other nonprofits, community events, those types of things. So signs are an integral and important part of our community, and so we have sign regulations to ensure that we get the right types of signs in the right locations. So that's kind of the, the bottom line is how we regulate the signs is where and what you can put on it. We don't, as David will get into, we don't get into what you can say. So I'll leave that for David, though. So our sign code is part of Chapter 21A45 in the Sammamish Municipal Code. That covers all signs outside of town center, and then the signs within town center are covered under Chapter 21B45 SMC. And what is in those sign regulations are language about what is exempt from the sign code, so what is not considered a sign. So that might include something like a, an American flag, something like a historic plaque. Certain things are just by nature of what they are, not part of the sign code, which means that they therefore don't require a permit. We also, in our sign code, talk about what is not allowed. So for instance, Sammamish does not allow billboards. That's something that a lot of communities do. They, they find them to be a blight, so they just disallow billboards. And that is something that is within the, within the powers of the city to regulate. So that's just one example. We can also say certain signs are okay in certain zones, but not in others. And then that leads us to what is allowed, so you, what is allowed and then what is required, what requires a permit. Then we're talking about permanent signs. So we're talking about freestanding signs, which covers monuments, and then the pedestal signs. We are talking about wall signs, awning signs, all kinds of signs in that list. I won't go through all of them, but there are, when you really dig into it, there are quite a few categories of signs, and you'd be kind of amazed, because you don't really pay a whole lot of mind when you're just driving down the street, but when you really dig into all the different variations, there's quite a few. And then again, those require permits, and sign permits are type 1 permits, which is the lowest discretion there. It's effectively no discretion. It's an administrative, does it meet the code or does it not meet the code? If it meets it, we can, we approve it administratively, there's no appeal. If it does not, then we, we deny it. So that's kind of a broad, oh, I, I take it back. Forgot about this part of the slide. So the other thing that we have in particularly our town center sign code is a certain level of design standards. So because town center is a mixed-use area, meant to be a mixed-use area, more dense urban fabric has certain, certain sign regulations, we want to then ensure that those signs proposed for those more dense land uses have certain design to it. So really what that is talking about is colors, the color scheme for the whole, the whole, the whole project, other, other types of architectural features and materials. And so that's getting at a higher quality, quote unquote, timeless sign. We also talk about in our sign code temporary signs, which is a different category of sign entirely. So I feel like two of our commissioners are very familiar with temporary signs. They're the ones that show up during political election season. They are other types of signs that are not permanent in nature. That's the best way I can describe it, is they might be on a little stake, it might say, "open house this way." It might say, for, in our case, we have a community banner program. It might be strung across the street that says, hey, between, you know, March 1st and March 15th is T-ball sign up, something like that. And then finally, the, probably the most talked about part of the sign code is the enforcement side of it. So we've always talked about the sign code as a, quote unquote, "do the right thing" code. So the, the city does not have the funds available to have everyone there at every hour of the day, making sure every sign that's put out there is complying with the code. But we do our best, and we have an enforcement team, code enforcement team, that does patrol for signs. And we get a lot of calls about signs, and that's a complaint-driven effort. So a lot of times, we'll, we'll, we'll hear about, oh, there's such and such sign in a roundabout and it's been polled. Code enforcement goes out there, they literally park in the roundabout, pull it out, take it in, put it in the truck, take it to our, our city hall, and we store it for a certain amount of time. And, and we notify the sign purveyor, I believe is the term, that their sign has been polled. And they either pick it up, and I, I believe there's a fine associated with it as well, depending on what it is. So those are kind of all of the components of a sign code. I went a little fast because I'm itching to get out of here, just kidding. But if you have questions on anything about kind of the, the details about what's in the sign code, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll let David talk about the Supreme Court case. So I'll look to the chair, co-chair, vice chair, sorry. Okay.
All right, so while the Sammamish sign code was minding its own business, Mr. Reed, who you can see in the picture over there, was putting out a sign advertising the services that his church held, which they held in various locations because they didn't have a permanent building. And he was putting that temporary sign down to tell people where his services were. In Gilbert, Arizona, where this was taking place, they had 23 different temporary sign categories, one of which is the one that he was, he was hammering into the ground there. And unfortunately for him, he was cited for, or his sign was cited for exceeding the time limit allowed for that particular kind of sign, and because the sign didn't include the date of the event, which is one of the requirements in their sign code. This is a little, these are a couple charts to show you the complexity of their temporary sign code. So you can see that political signs were allowed 32 square feet, whereas ideological signs only got 20 square feet. And the, the sign advertising the event, or the, the church service for, for Mr. Reed was only allowed to be six square feet. And you can see on the left there that there's also lots of different durations that were allowed, depending on what sign type it was. You can see on the bottom left that the location was different, depending on what type of sign it was. So there were all these different rules for all these different types of messages. And Mr. Reed sued the city of Gilbert, Arizona, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court, where in a 9-0 decision, the Supreme Court ruled that the regulations for non-commercial temporary signs that the city of Gilbert had, excuse me, represented a content-based regulation of speech, which singled out different types of signs for special treatment, and as a result, were subject to strict scrutiny, which they failed. So I'll go back through that again to iron out all the terms here. So a content-based regulation is a regulation that logically regulates the sign based on what the content of it is. So that's exactly what these were, is these were all non, these are all just different non-commercial messages. And I'll make that distinction a lot, where we distinguish between commercial and non-commercial messages. Commercial being anything associated with a business, non-commercial being everything else associated with, you know, freedom of speech or nonprofit activities and things like that. So they found that these content-based regulations were unconstitutional because it restricted, it essentially privileged certain messages over others. So in this particular case, they privileged, they allowed political signs a larger size than ideological signs, which were allowed a larger size than the temporary event sign that the church put up. And what strict scrutiny means, strict scrutiny is a legal term that means essentially that in order to justify the regulation, the government has to have what's called a compelling government interest that is narrowly tailored to achieve the interest that the government has. I'll leave the legal theory till next time when we have a lawyer present with us, but suffice it to say that that is the highest bar that a regulation has to, that a regulation can be held to. And often, regulations that are subject to strict scrutiny will be found unconstitutional because they said there's no narrow government interest in because they said there's no narrow government interest in regulating signs in this manner to the extent that certain messages are given larger size to promote themselves than other messages. So what all that meant for Sammamish is, in our sign code, prior to when we did our update last year, we had content-based regulations. So I put this up here, not to read it out loud, but just to show you, we had a political sign category, we had a community event sign category, we had a fundraising sign category, and all of these categories had different rules about how long they could be up, how big they could be, where they could be placed, and all that. So we were definitely in that category, as were most cities, in having regulations that were based not just on the fact that it's a non-commercial message, but that what specific type of non-commercial message it was. So this challenge was the primary issue for us, as we went through our sign code update last year. And what we ended up coming up with is this three-type system, where we decided to regulate non-commercial temporary signs by placement and sign type. So our type 1 was non-A-frame signs placed in the right-of-way. So you can sort of think of that as the category that's most analogous to political signs. And it shares most of the limitations on size and placement duration as election signs had previously. We have type 2, which are public right-of-way, which are signs placed in the public right-of-way that are A-frame signs. So for that, we're thinking of such things as the signs that advertise the farmer's market in the summer. Other kind of event signs would fall under that category. And then finally, we have type 3 signs, which are all temporary signs that are placed on private land. So there's a quick example of the type of signs that we were thinking of. Of course, you can use, for example, if you wanted to place a type 1 sign, it can be any type of sign. It doesn't have to be an election sign, but we sort of use that as a guide for us to try to come up with regulations that would mostly mirror what there was before, but in a content-neutral So that was kind of the big item, the big-ticket item from last year. But we also made a number of other changes to the sign code that were a result of, you know, we had had essentially the same sign code since incorporation. It had been tinkered with a little bit here and there, but it was mostly this kind of hodgepodge of different regulations that were inherited from the county or were otherwise kind of added on here and there. So I'm not going to go through this in any great detail, but we expanded the type, the list of the type of signs you could use for a home business. We added an additional residential identification sign for housing developments. We tweaked commercial signs in town center a little bit to provide more flexibility for commercial properties in town center. We also expanded the restriction on placement of temporary signs in and around roundabouts. And finally, somewhat relevant to the issue that we're going to bring up in our next two meetings, is we removed an expired pilot program related to electronic reader boards for schools. So in addition to making all those policy changes, we also felt that the code, as it was written, was not terribly user-friendly, was a little word-heavy, so we made a great effort to take what looked like this and turn it into something a little more usable like that, which certainly both helped my word formatting skills and also, I think, made this a lot more accessible, both for anybody who wanted to put up a permanent or temporary sign, and also for our code enforcement team to, you know, be able to figure out if something was in compliance with the code or not a little more quickly than they were able to before. So I'll turn it over to Doug for the last couple slides here, where he'll talk about what we're going to be bringing to you next time.
Thank you, David. I'll take the presentation across the finish line for tonight. So the reason why we're back here is two distinct pieces of this. One is, I've been involved in other code amendments in other jurisdictions, and this is the natural progression of every single substantive code amendment, is that you do the massive effort that David has just described, and then you go to implement it, and literally the first permit you get, you think, "Oh, my God, that's the one thing that we didn't think about." And so, not that that really happened a lot here, but what we did over time, as we were implementing this, we figured out that, oh, there's some minor inconsistencies, there's some cleanup that we need to do. So that relates to, in particular, real estate and residential signs, inconsistencies in a couple different regulations, and then some definitions in a couple categories. So those are purely cleanup items. There's no substantive review for those. I think David mentioned earlier that we will be coming on the 15th of March with the red line edits. So we haven't proposed them yet. We will provide all of them in the packet. So you will get a chance to see all of these edits, and we'll describe them for you in, hopefully, an easy-to-understand way. But the point with those is that it's more about the cleaning it up after the implementation. But the one part of this effort that we do need substantive input on is, again, as David mentioned, the electronic reader board program. So as you all most likely know, there is, there are actually two electronic reader board signs in the city, one for Skyline High School and one for Eastlake High School. Both were permitted under the pilot program that was in effect for five years, and so they were legally established. However, the pilot program expired, so nobody came in with a permit at that time, so it went away. And once that program went away, then no reader boards were allowed. So currently, today, we do not allow those types of signs. And there has been interest in the public and interest from our council to look at the validity of allowing reader board signs. So that is something that we will be coming to commission with, to say, this is what we think, this is the way we think we can regulate it. This is the way we think that, right, as David has progressed the slideshow here, this example actually came up in our discussions about the sign code in 2017. The specific use here is the Central Washington University Extension School, and that monument sign on 228th, there was a lot of interest expressed in allowing that to have a reader board component to it. So again, these are driven by our council members saying, yes, this is something that we want to look at. Put it on the, put it on your list of things to do for the next year. So that's essentially what led us to now. So again, the review that Planning Commission will do will give us direction on how to regulate that. So again, if you think about the toolbox, we have certain tools and certain tools available to us that we can use. However, we always, when we're talking about signs, we always have to phrase it in the fact that there is a legal component to all of this. So we wanted to show you this graph as, just to illustrate the inverse relationship between the potential for a ton of these signs to go everywhere and the legal risk. Basically, the lower the legal risk, the more the potential for sign proliferation. As you get more risky legally, you therefore are implementing regulations that are more risky, so you are limiting the amount of signs. So we just wanted to show this graphic as a way to explain that you should think about it in the context of the legality of it, but also in the context of how many signs are going to be implemented under these regulations. And really, you want to hit that sweet spot, right? So again, we do not have the red line edits for you today. We will have those at the next meeting, and at that point, we'll talk about this idea.
So can I, I'm sorry, can I ask, then what is, what was all the stuff included in the packet?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to?
Sure. So that was to show, that was the red line from the pre, oops, from the pre-2017 sign code to the new version that was adopted by council last spring. So that was to show you the transition from the old version to the current version. And then next time, we're going to bring to you the transition from this version to the next version. The reason we included that one in there is just, we wanted to focus this meeting on establishing the context for what had come before and establishing kind of a foundation for what we're going to be doing next.
So the red line text for next week is just going to be for the code cleanup, or is it also going for, going to be for the electronic reader boards?
It's going to be both. So we're going to include all of our code cleanup proposals, and then we're essentially going to propose a certain, a certain set of regulations for electronic reader boards, but we expect that that will be tweaked based on what the commission would like to do with that.
Do you have any more slides?
Just the timeline, which, as I mentioned, we have two more meetings coming up with the commission, including a public hearing on the 19th. And then we're tentatively scheduled to head to city council with the commission's recommendation in May.
I did want to just say one thing before we turn it back over to commission. Think back to the earlier presentation tonight. One of the first slides we had was that flow, the kind of disparate education components, and then moving to the conceptualization to the final proposal. I think that's a good slide that we could have for this, too, is that right now, we're learning, we've got all the elements out there, we want to set the foundation, and then we're going to move into the conceptualization phase, and then a proposal. And this will move pretty quickly, as you'll notice on the schedule here. So we felt it was really important, when talking about signs, to talk about what it is we're doing and what we have already done. So that was the reason for that. We apologize if it got a little bit confusing with the ordinance, but I think it is helpful to see the level of effort that went into that earlier code amendment, which a few of the commissioners were involved in from the beginning and back last year. So that was the reason for that.
Okay, Mark, do you have any questions?
Nope, nothing.
Jane?
Nothing.
How is the sign code working, especially for town center? I know that that was something that, that was a big push, why we did the update last time, because it was town center-driven things.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we feel like the edits that we have made are actually really good. They're working, they are implementable, they are streamlining the process. So nothing, nothing has been more difficult coming out of that effort. Really, the minor cleanup things are more like annoyances or confusion that are created, less about substantive, we did something where we built a bridge and we forgot to, you know, put a section of it in, or something like that, so.
And the public's happy with the signage that's been put up as a result of that?
Yeah, we've heard some positive feedback. I actually haven't had any negative feedback. So that usually says a lot, when a planner doesn't get negative feedback. That says more than anything else. But yeah, we have not had any complaints. We do feel that as town center grows, we'll see more of that, quote-unquote, "timeless" element being implemented in town center. For instance, the Phase 3 of the TRF project up the street, the Met Market project, Phase 3 up the hill, the apartment building is called Sky Sammamish. It used to be called Sky Apartments, and now it's called Sky Sammamish. They just came in with a proposal for their sign package. So my initial review, I've done a completeness review on it, and it looks really well-done. So I think by having these standards in the code, we are forcing people to provide a higher level of sign quality, so.
And then, David, you're, want to commend you on your word skills. Photoshop, too.
I wouldn't put it on my resume, but thank you.
Well, I think I would, because I want to also compliment the clarity that we're starting to see. And tonight, it was such a holistic approach, because signage fits into traffic, housing, all this is going to come together. And I heard you bring up the thing that the public is pleased, I understand tweaking, hopefully you can put a tweak in there, that we can continue to have that input, because you can't be perfect, especially with communicating, which has very many changes. Our skills and lack of skills of communicating change. So put that in, that we might have to have this, this meeting might occur a couple years from now, again, to look at the sign codage. I did want to say that hopefully, the branding effort that the city is a little bit involved in this, with our new communication manager, just hopefully aware of what we're doing with signage, so. Now, are you?
I did want to just add two things real quick before we wrap up. The first is that, in terms of the electronic reader board portion, I didn't want to say that we've been working hard behind the scenes, and we've met with our legal counsel a couple times on this project, Charlotte Archer from Kenyon Deason, who also worked with us on the code update last year, to provide you with options for changing the proposal that we're going to give you about electronic reader board signs in a way that is legally sound and that we feel will get the best results. So along with our proposal, we're also going to present you with some, we call them levers, so the different levers that you can pull to varying degrees to change the proposal to, you know, fit a little differently, depending on what you're interested in. So we don't expect you to come next time and sort of have to come up with ideas on your own about how to change it. We're going to be guiding you to, you know, we want to hear what your vision is for this particular type of regulation, and we want to assist you in realizing that with the tools that we think are going to be most useful and that are going to hold up to any sort of legal scrutiny, which usually comes from cases in which it appears that the city is either privileging one particular speaker or one particular message over another, or that the city is providing an opportunity for certain speakers to express their message in a way that they're not to others. So that's the line that we kind of have to walk, but we will be presenting you with some tools that you can use to implement whatever vision you have. And the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, we're coming to you with all of the fixes that we have identified and that our code enforcement team has identified. But also, if you, you know, read through the sign code, either in 21A for the city in general, or 21B for town center in particular, and you see something that looks a little odd, or you see something that you want to explore more, or find out if we can change it, we're more than willing to listen to those and to consider those as well. So don't consider what we propose to be the limit to what we can look at. So I also wanted to invite you to bring any other issues to the table.
Thank you. That's well said. I know where you're supposed to not say "thank you" all the time, but well-stated. So any further additions? If not, if not, it's now time for public comment on agenda items, and I'd like to take the chair's privilege and have Mr. Paul Stickney present if he wants. We are pushing up for our adjournment time, but we'll let you, the public commenters, handle that.
We might have to extend a little bit.
There are two sheets in here. One's a copy of the presentation, because it's nice to have hard copy, and then a, two different things.
I have to move the mic down, because I'm short as composed to Mr. Me.
Isn't this an old one, Paul, that you gave us before?
Oh, there might be one on that, no, no, I think this is, I may have made a mistake. This should be called "Fully Planning for Housing." Yeah, is that what it is? All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Paul Stickney. I'm at 504 228th Avenue Southeast. And my comments tonight are going to be rooted in many of the previous things I have, I have turned in and given over the last few weeks. And these comments are somewhat a repeat, somewhat high-level, but more mid-level and in the weeds. And they happen to overlap what you're talking about this evening, which is housing gaps and getting objective information. So I am not going to repeat any of the contents of those documents on the screen, they're just referenced as the source for this evening's slideshow. Our comprehensive plan, it does fully plan for our share of regional growth, and staff gave a great explanation as to what that is. gave a great explanation as to what that is. I think our target is about 4,650. It might be a couple units higher, lower than that. But what our comprehensive plan does not fully plan for is the other side of the GMA, but that's not the reason it should be done. It should be done because it's in the best interests of a residential community to know what the internal needs and wants are within our city over time specifically. These are two totally different sets of numbers, and both, from a GMA standpoint, must be planned for, but from a city standpoint of choice, I say strongly should. So at this time, and here's the repeat, I suggest, and oh, this is really, I'm talking to the city council about this, because in doing these things, it would be their choice to actually take these steps, and I know that. I'm keeping you in the loop. I'm not asking you to go and lobby city council. I'm just educating you as to what I'm talking with the city council about. The housing strategy plan should be paused, the transportation master plan should be paused, and any other efforts in land use, because I'm advocating a land use change. Then we take actions to make changes to the comprehensive plan, to add that second set of numbers, the specific housing want and need numbers, which will be covered later in the presentation as to how it comes from here to making decisions by the council. But the two end games are: change the comp plan to add specific numbers and specific policies to decrease housing oversupplies within our city, and specific numbers and policies to increase housing undersupplies. So where this all begins is with a complete and comprehensive housing needs analysis. And the housing needs analysis needs to study over 40 economic and demographic groups that are distinctly unique within Samamish, unlike our peer cities. It's not county standards, it's who are we? In some past presentations, I've shown that our 2003 comp plan, our city knew how to do gaps the right way. Supply less need equals gap. That's in the upper-left corner. Also in 2003, we studied as a city household income up to $200,000, which was about 400% average median income back in 2003. During the comp plan compliance time, we turned in a sheet that just interpolated the city's numbers from 2003 into current, 2016, and suggested that the city study up to 390% AMI based on the study that was done back in 2003. That led to the current sheet that I gave. And this evening, what's in yellow is a convenience for you. It's like a redline copy. The yellow is what we've changed from the 2016 copy that we turned in. And it's my recommendation, that I'm talking to the city council about, to do a needs analysis, which finds out supply, demand, and gap for ownership and rental for all these AMI categories and all these demographic categories. After that information is obtained, then we, as a city, should conduct statistically valid surveys to find out two really important things. Where are our citizen wants greater than the needs that were identified, and where are the wants less than those needs? Once those two sets of information are in hand, then we share all that information with the entire community, so they're completely informed, and convene several meetings, all kinds of methods. And we talk about the pros and cons and effects of meeting needs past, present, and future, from the standpoint of not meeting any of them to the standpoint of meeting all of them. And we have a community discussion based on the information. And then conclusively, at the end of this overall approach, the city council chooses what are the numbers we decide to lessen housing we have too much of in the future, and what are the numbers we increase housing we don't have enough of, and create all the policies needed to make it happen. So these are the suggestions I'm going to be making to the city council to take, because I think we have to plan for both sets of numbers in our comp plan, and those two sets of numbers guide the housing strategy plan, not only one. That's my comment.
Thank you, Paul. The vice chair at this time entertained a motion to extend the meeting, say to, Mr. Eastman, you're going to talk?
Sure.
And Mary? Okay. I think it'd be, let's see, who spoke first? So Mary, you'd be up. While she's getting up there, is there?
Second.
Well, what, 22?
Yeah.
8:40?
Eight forty.
It has been moved and seconded in hearing the opposition, meaning is extended until 8:40 PM, or sooner. Mary?
Thank you. My name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. I want to particularly thank you guys for your presentation, and especially for Vice Chair Crandall's summary, and also David Goodman's at the very end. I think you guys said just the right stuff about what's supposed to happen on the 15th. I'm here to talk, like I said, about having exemptions and encouraging art, plants, rocks, education, and historic things, because I see that the code just either doesn't allow them or isn't wide enough. So for example, I don't believe art is a sign. Like, if you are a child, or someone who doesn't read English, or if you're from Turkey, or Russia, or China, or someplace, and you see this, I don't think it's really helpful to you. This is another sample inside. You see a cow there. That kind of tells you what's going on. So it helps the look and understanding, but the cow part is art. It's not really part of the sign. Again, here, the fish is part of the sign, but it's the artwork. It's not the actual meaning, like where it says "fresh catch," that's the sign. And then if you look behind it, you'll see a bunch of geometric kind of shapes, and that's an art line pattern thing that enhances the look. It's not really part of the sign. And we also have a lot of things like educational historic signs, where visitors and residents can learn and appreciate things, and I believe those should be exempted. This is a stormwater example. They've taken one of those utility boxes, and this is in Bellevue. They've covered it, telling you how your rainwater from your garden, you're washing your car and your roof, goes to our lakes and streams. It also gives the spill response hotline, and I think it's a great thing to do, but I believe these are not currently allowed in our city per code. Also, we do have a lot of habitat and native plant people, and if people wanted to do a sign made out of plants, it would probably have to be large, bigger than 32 square feet, which is the maximum sign. And I would like to see, if you do anything in vegetation, then it would just be exempted. Samamish Plateau Water has a whole bunch of water towers. This one is over here on 228th. One of the most beautiful things I've ever seen. Since those are murals, and murals are regulated as a sign or a wall sign, they can only be 32 square feet. And you're like, well, so they're not going to paint them very often, but they are taking down a water tower, I think, which doesn't happen very often. And when they put it up, it'd be cool if they were able to do the thing, or like this one, you could even add salmon swimming on the stream. But right now, you need coaching just to do that, I believe. I know Metropolitan Market, from the Arts Commission, I heard they were interested in doing a mural, but they found out they would be penalized, because if they did a mural, it would count as a sign, and they would lose their letters. So we didn't get a mural there. And Larry Crandall, last year, had said, "Well, blank walls send messages, too." And I think it's really important that we be able to put things on our buildings for character, like maybe a mural even going around this side would be really cool. Also, as Town Center bills, developers should be able to pick art, or find art, or pay for art as part of their development. It doesn't necessarily have to come from existing city taxpayers and funds. I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, and they have these boxes all over the town. This is one that's a Native American tribute. So Lewis Thompson Road, where it meets the Parkway, that's where Isakoose Creek runs. And I don't believe Lewis Thompson Road was named after Lewis Thompson, because there was a Lewis Tohale cut that used to live there, obviously, Native American. And George Davis, which sounds like an American name, he was actually a Snoqualmie Tribe ancestor for McKenna Sweet Dormin, and he was a landowner where I live. So I was hoping that the big silver appliance-looking boxes could be covered with something that would give some history of the area. Particularly, there's going to be a walkway that, it's like the King County will build for the trail that will connect there. It's at a traffic light, and I think it's a great place for people to do. The thing on the left is a cutthroat trout, which we have here, but I think maybe doing this on the other side of the box, where we'd have the kokanee salmon or something for our little red fish. I'd just love to be able to see those things in the city. I believe we cannot even do one of these boxes. I know in the past, the Arts Commission did have money to do this, but the code wasn't there, so they weren't able to implement it. So if you even want one of these in the city, we need to change the code. So how hard is it to change the code? I really don't think it is. Under 21A 45030, it lists historic plaques, traffic control signs, which the art that's in the roundabout is not actually art. It's a traffic control sign. Plaques, tablets, and then it says "nonverbal religious symbols attached to a place of worship." If we can exempt religious symbols, we ought to be able to exempt art. I'd also like to be able to exempt plants or rocks that spell out things or shapes, educational materials, interpretive signs, historic things. And even, like by Redmond, there's some concrete textures that actually make an art. And I just think those things should be allowed in the city. We're seeing all these gigantic retaining walls get built, particularly down by the trail, and they just look like giant blocks, and I think art should be able to be added. The other thing I noticed in the code is in, if you look under "fuel," or if you just search for "fuel," this is on pages 32 and 34 of your current packet, it says on a fuel sign, "Fuel's price signs shall not be included in the sign area," so it doesn't count against you in the 32 square feet, nor the number of limitations, so it doesn't count as your first or second sign. And if we can do that for fuel price signs, I don't know why we can't do that for art, or it shouldn't count against you in the sign area, because it's an embellishment, and it shouldn't limit your number of signs that you have. And then it does say fuel price signs can't be over 20 square feet, but I don't think you should limit the square footage of the art. And then I know people are going to say, "Well, I don't necessarily like art, or I don't want something awful." You can't write code to define what good art is, but what you do need is a process. So the Arts Commission is extremely adept. I think they even have a 15-point thing. If someone wanted to do art, they'd have to go through the Arts Commission and have to be approved, and I believe city council or planning commission would get a C. So that way, you wouldn't end up with a, you know, 400-story Lego guy in the middle of the city or something or other. You do need to have a process for review for it. And if you're going to put it somewhere, it's a traffic thing, public works would have to look at it, and if it's going to be in a park, parks would have to look at it. So you would just exempt art and say it's subject to review, approval, and any processes through those. Isaguad does the same thing. They've exempted their art. I gave you their little triflote brochure. They don't say what the regulations are for doing the art wraps for the utility boxes, but they give you the process for doing it. And I actually got that from Jennifer R. Woods down in Isaguad. She talked with me. There's an art lady that works with them, and she gave me that. And then I know Claridell Shedd from the Arts Commission has talked with her more recently. So I just really would like to see art in the city. The only way it's going to happen is if you guys would allow it to be exempted, with some of the other exemptions I've suggested. And my final thing is, the very center of earth is art.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Eastman?
Yeah, following tonight's presentation, sometimes I get the feeling that maybe we're maybe a little bit out of touch with reality on the income chart that the gentleman presented. And then I've watched the other presentations for the last few meetings, and when we discuss housing prices, some of the prices that are being discussed, that's nowhere near reality right now in the city of Samamish. According to Zillow, the median house price is $950,000 in Samamish. The median household income is $150,000. But if you look at the median house price, you can't even afford a $950,000 house with $150,000 household income. So that number's going to go up to between $200,000 household income to $250,000 household income to afford a median-priced house in Samamish. So I feel when we talk about housing, and affordable housing, and, you know, all these numbers, we need to kind of, in the back of our heads, have the reality figures of actually what it costs people to live here, and what they have to make to rent a two-bedroom apartment. And Samamish, the rent's about $2,000 a month, which means your household income has to be probably $100,000 or over, and on that checklist, I mean, that was like the furthest to the right category. So that should be, maybe be the furthest to the left in the presentation, because that's just what's going on here. That's a fact. So we shouldn't pretend like this is an affordable place to live, and people make $16,000, or $30,000, or $50,000, and they might now, but, you know, they can never leave and go anywhere else. Which brings me to my next point, that in the Seattle Times, their article, maybe about a year ago, that said that there's more people, native Washingtonians, that leave Washington than actually stay here. Why is that? Because they can't afford it. I mean, you think about your kids, growing up here and loving Samamish, and having a great, you know, being born and raised in this town, but, I mean, what are their chances they can come back here? I mean, if they're not making between $200 and $250K, they can't afford a house here. So let's not pretend that, you know, this is a happy place, that our kids and our grandkids are all going to be able to come back and live, unless, you know, somehow we free up some supply, and maybe housing goes down, or we come up with some solutions. But, you know, I don't know if there's a solution to any of this, but I don't think we should act like that it's possible unless we really start to think about it, which brings me to my next point. You know, we're happy-go-lucky about this. We're all, we're meeting our growth targets of 4,650 units. Yeah, I mean, every city in the Puget Sound has enough land for their growth targets, but we're projecting 1.8 million people coming to this area by 2050. So the amount of people here well exceed those growth targets that we established however many years back. So, you know, are we thinking that maybe we're going to have to take on way more growth than those targets actually plan for? So rather than saying, "Hey, we're great, we're meeting our growth targets, we're good," maybe in the back of our head, we need to have a plan to accommodate some of these 1.8 million people that are going to be coming here. And I know that the GMA will divvy those targets out, but to say we were meeting the current targets, we all know that, you know, this place is being flooded with people, so we're going to have to do something. Which brings me to my next point, 80U's. Currently, they're limited to 1,000 square feet. As you all know, or most of you know, I have land in the no disturbance area, so I am limited to one house, regardless if I have a 10-acre parcel, or one-acre parcel, or if I'm zoned for 40 houses. I'm limited to not being able to subdivide. So, you know, I could probably put 30 or 40 80U's on my property, but you can only put one, and you can only put it at 1,000 square feet. So I'd like to see maybe the 80U code change, where you could have more than 1,000 square feet, or maybe more than one 80U, if you are limited by some of the other codes within the city. And actually, increase the housing number here in areas that can take it on. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Is there any comments from the council? Then I'd like to make one announcement that's semi-important, and that's on March 15th, the meeting will start at 5:00 PM, and it will be a potluck, which you'll hear later on. And the other thing is, drive well, but the most important thing- And the other thing is, drive well, but the most important thing, Mr. McIntyre didn't miss out on clarifying a couple things in his note, and the reason he was called out was he wanted to be present at the birth of his daughter. The chair at this time would open for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
If those in favor of adjourning the meeting at 8:40 PM signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That would get everybody on board if we did the same sign. Sorry, I just, everybody's... So we're all in favor of adjourning officially?